We're going to go to defer once again to Mr. Jones for our inspirational invocation.
All bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we know that you are always near us and beside us in all that we do. We ask that you be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of this our great city. Guide us and direct us in what we do and what we say, and give us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the courage to act. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and evergreen. Oh, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
Okay, great. Could I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Please open. Very good. You want to make another disclosure?
I'm sorry, by vote of 11 to 0, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
I just want to make sure the record reflects when I entered and when I came back, when I left and came back relative to abstaining from the Atlantic Park proceedings.
Okay, Rosemary, okay. Okay, and next, you were going to request a motion to vote for approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of May 17th, 2022, and the formal session of May 24th, 2022. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Votes open.
By vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, great.
Wait one second, and I need to abstain on the May 17th.
May 17th?
Yes, ma'am. I was not attending.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need, you got me?
Go ahead. I'll need you to state it for the record, though.
I'm staying on the approval of minutes for the last meeting in May, whichever that day was.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, thank you.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and go forward with the mayor's presentation now. And I am honored to defer this, you know, this noble duty to our dear friend, Michael Berucci.
Thank you, Mayor. It's Pride Month, and thanks to you, I have the honor and privilege of reading a proclamation. But before I do that, I'd just like to say a few words. Would that be okay with you?
Sure.
Thank you. I want to share with the public and those who are here and with this council that this is the first time in the history of the city of Virginia Beach that a Pride proclamation has been presented at a city council meeting. And I want to thank you, Mayor, for creating it. It's not the first step forward that you've led. In 2019, shortly after you became mayor, you were the first mayor to create a proclamation designating June as Pride Month, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank this council and this body for consistently, since I've been a member of this body, supporting the LGBTQ community time and time again by creating and supporting policies that affirm, uplift, and support our neighbors, friends, and colleagues. It's a remarkable achievement. It's a remarkable leap forward for those of us like myself who grew up here to see the changes that have occurred. But most importantly, I think, I want to thank and applaud the citizens of Virginia Beach for the progress that we've made as a community to connect ourselves more fully as neighbors, as friends, as colleagues, as people who love and care for our community. And I think that's what this proclamation and Pride Month in general really represents and stands for. These policies and the decisions made by this body and supported by city staff have consistently resulted in the city of Virginia Beach receiving a better-than-perfect score on the Human Rights Campaign's Municipal Equality Index. And just to make sure I got it right, the MEI examines how inclusive municipal laws, policies, and services are of LGBTQ people who live and work there. It's a very, it's a very serious process, evaluation, and the city of Virginia Beach has received a more-than-perfect score. And just to talk a little bit about this proclamation itself and why I'm making these comments, for those organizations and those individuals and those communities who have, as commonplace, received recognitions like this, it might not seem like a big deal because we see time and time again, for decades, for generations, the city of Virginia Beach was created, as we know it, in 1963, I believe, existed as Prentiss Anne County for long, long before that. And for time and time again, we've seen organizations, constituencies come and receive proclamations like this. But the LGBT community has never, has never had that level of visibility and recognition. And so it is historic. It is a big deal, and it is, represents monumental leap forward in how we connect with each other and relate to each other as neighbors and human beings. And I'm really grateful to live in a community where there's no limit to what you can achieve, that we all have equal access to opportunity, no matter who we are. We still have work to do, but we have come a long way, and that's credit to the people who live here. It's also not lost on me that I'm sitting here in this chair thanks to the great people of Virginia Beach who trusted me with the opportunity to serve in this role. And I hope that everyone who is watching, who's here tonight, members of council, the public, those who are watching, are sort of experiencing the same, if not sense of pride, which is accessible to each of us and all of us, no matter who you are, to, for gratitude, to live in a community where each of us aspires to a community where we're all treated equally, with dignity and respect, and based on the content of our character. I want to take an opportunity specifically to recognize Neva White, who is the LGBTQ liaison to the city manager's office. You'll hear a little bit about some groups and organizations who are with us, but I especially want to thank Neva for her advocacy within the city of Virginia Beach and on behalf of the LGBTQ+ community in Virginia Beach, and many, many others. And I'm about to read a proclamation that was created by the mayor. And I just want to note that when I do so, I'm reading this proclamation in memory and a recognition of the generations of people who have come before us who never got a chance to hear a proclamation like this in recognition of their work, people who were out, people who weren't out, people who couldn't be out. Also, in gratitude for the people, many of them are here, who are doing work today to make sure that our community lives up to the promises that we talk about, extending to each of us as human beings. And also in honor of celebration of people who are going to come before us and are going to be beneficiaries of the work that we're all doing together and forge an even brighter path forward. So with that, I'd be happy to read the proclamation. "The city of Virginia Beach remains committing to fostering an inclusive community that welcomes and empowers all." Actually, also, could I have everyone who's going to receive this to come up to the podium? "In an effort towards continued improvement of the lives of our workforce and citizens, an LGBTQ liaison has been identified in each of our public safety departments, police, fire, and EMS, and emergency communications, and citizen services, the sheriff's office, and the city manager's office. The liaisons examine the city's policies and services through an LGBTQ lens and provide a friendly ear to constituents or staff wishing to bring LGBTQ+ related issues to the attention of city government, which has led to the city of Virginia Beach receiving, and I will editorialize, more-than-perfect score on the Human Rights Campaign's Municipal Equality Index. Whereas, this city's LGBTQ community members, through tireless volunteerism and advocacy, build strong community partnerships, connecting LGBTQ+ youth, teens, adults, and families to supportive services that enhance the physical, mental, and social well-being of our entire community while demonstrating the capacity of the creative, social, economic, and influential force of the LGBTQ community and its allies to affect positive change where we live, where we work, where we play. And whereas, in the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28th, 1969, in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall uprising. During this uprising, LGBTQ citizens rose up and fought against the discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, June is celebrated as LGBTQ Pride Month nationwide, and LGBTQ Pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall uprising. And whereas, June 2022 will mark 33 years of summertime festivals, now known as Pride Fest, hosted by Hampton Roads Pride, who will host a Pride celebration at the oceanfront in the city of Virginia Beach, and everyone is invited on Sunday, June 29th. And whereas, since inception, Hampton Roads Pride has continued to celebrate unity, embrace diversity, and instill pride in our region's LGBTQ and allied communities by increasing visibility and promoting full human and civil rights of LGBTQ people. And whereas, the Transgender Assistance Program of Virginia, TAP VA, an all-volunteer, trans-led nonprofit organization in Virginia Beach, works to end homelessness within the transgender community, TAP VA provides educational training to organizations and agencies who want to become more inclusive and knowledgeable around the issues facing the local transgender community. And whereas, the LGBT Life Center has been serving Hampton Roads LGBTQ communities and all people affected by HIV through improving health and wellness, strengthening families and communities, and providing transformative education and advocacy for nearly 30 years. And whereas, the LGBT Life Center has been a valuable resource to our Virginia Beach community by providing permanent supportive housing, case management, and counseling to homeless persons living with HIV/AIDS. And whereas, it is imperative that all people in the community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, are valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now therefore, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as Pride Month in the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you, Mayor.
And I would invite each of you to say a few words if you'd like to.
Hi, hello. My name is Stacy Walls. I'm the CEO of LGBT Life Center. We serve this whole region, from Williamsburg all the way through the Upper Peninsula down through the Outer Banks of North Carolina. I'm here tonight to publicly thank you for recognizing Pride Month. In doing so, you are lifting the voices and the visibility of an entire community that has historically been diminished, or ignored, or undervalued. And Virginia Beach is making a change in that. Virginia Beach is recognizing the importance of visibility and lifting voices of your local citizens and hearing what they have to say and that they're important. The last two years of COVID have meant the postponement and cancellation of many Pride events, and this has led to some isolationism and some loneliness in a community that is powered and fueled by community. This year, the events are coming back in full force, and we invite you to join us at all of them. Like Michael said, the Pride event and the Vibe is one of my favorite events, and last year it was amazing. And so the local nonprofits feel supported by the city of Virginia Beach and all the producers of the event. And so thank you for making that happen in your local community. Our organization hosts a Silver Pride event for 50 and better. So you're also welcome to join us at the Botanical Gardens for Silver Pride. But thank you so much for your support, particularly over COVID. Your grant to the LGBT Life Center helped us provide more emergency food, emergency housing, and support to individuals during COVID when our organization shifted to provide support during a time that was reminiscent of the AIDS crisis back in the 80s. And so it was scary for everybody, and particularly for nonprofit leaders who tried to keep our businesses going during that time. And you all made it possible for that to happen. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi there. My name is Shay Ali. I am on the Board of Directors for TAP Virginia, which is a nonprofit that provides assistance to transgender folks who are facing homelessness, which is a huge problem within the community. One out of five people, transgender adults, do experience homelessness throughout their lifetime. So we would like to thank you for providing us with grant funding so that we can help our community, keep people off of the streets, and provide resources to folks who sometimes aren't able to find resources. So we do thank the city of Virginia Beach for assisting us.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Hey, Cole, how you doing?
Hello. My name is Cole Werkeiser. For those of you who don't know me, I'm here on behalf of Hampton Roads Pride today. I'm an immediate past president. Unfortunately, our president and vice president were stuck in traffic, so they were unable to be here. But I did want to just especially thank you all for everything that you are doing to make our city better and let you know about two of our upcoming events that are in Virginia Beach, which we're really excited about. The first is in the Vibe Creative District on June 15th. And the second is in the Seand this year, behind 24th Street at the Oceanfront. And we're really excited about that event, and we invite you all to come. They're free, they're family-friendly, and they're open to everybody. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thanks a bunch. Hey, Neva.
And I am Neva White, and I am your LGBTQ+ liaison. And I really just came up to the mic because Pride and the Vibe is on the 12th and not the 15th. I want to thank you all for your support, for the city manager's support, and for the previous city manager, Dave Hansen, for appointing me to the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Moss, we have some valued guests in the room today.
We do. It's not, everybody knows what a fan I am of Boy Scouts. And I have my own troop here tonight. They'd come on up from Troop 375. It's sponsored by Old Donation Episcopal Church. And I'll recognize the adults, but I'll let the scouts mention their own names. But for adults, we have our scout master, which is Matt Lee, who also was a scout in this very troop many, many years ago. And his wife, Barbara Lee, is the cub master for the troop that feeds our scout troop. So we'll start off, Lucas, you can start off and tell them, people come up to the mic and tell them who you are, and they're here working on their communication and citizenship in the community badges. You're not bashful, I know.
I'm Lucas Carlson, and I'm Neva White, and that's all I'm gonna say because I'm stage fright.
Andrew.
Hello, my name is Andrew Carlson. I am the twin brother of Lucas. I am also here working on my communications. I am a member of staff, and I am right now the scrap for my troop. Thank you for having us come here today, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your day.
Good job.
Gabriel.
Hi, my name is Gabriel Watkins. I am here as a member of the Radioactive Patrol, and just want to say thank you for having us.
And Kason, did you brighten up your hair just for us today? All right.
My name is Kason McReynolds. I'm here to represent Radioactive Patrol. I'm also their assistant patrol leader. I am here to work on for my Communication Merit Badge. Thank you for having us.
And the senior patrol leader. There you go, Matt.
My name's Matthew Lee. I'm the senior patrol leader for my troop, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for all the good work the leaders do. This is the future, and it's bright.
And I'll tell you what, if you can form a single line, come up here, we'd like to give you a city seal button, okay? Yo, thank you so much for coming. Thanks for what you do. I knew what's happening. I was a Cub Scout and a Boy Scout. I wound up in the Marine Corps, go figure. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Moss. At this point, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on the resort area mobility plan ramp parking fees?
Yes, sir, none signed up.
Okay. Now we're going to go on to the bid opening for the non-exclusive master lease for...
Yes, I did. I signed up for everything, and I have a confirmation to be here.
Mayor, I'm looking at her email. She did not sign up for that item.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Messner. You're not signed up.
I am signed up, and I have a right to speak, and you're violating my due process. I have a confirmation from here. Confirmation.
I can confirm she didn't sign up.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Messner. Okay. All right, now we're going to move on to the non-exclusive, you know, lease for the city right of way, okay? And bids for non-exclusive master lease pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-2102. I will now summarize the bids that have been received for the non-exclusive master lease to use and occupy the city streets and public right of way for the purposes of consulting, installing, and maintaining network facilities for telecommunications services and within and through the city. One bid was received. Southwest Network Authority has the bid the following: A 15-year franchise followed by year-to-year automatic renewals and termination by either party with 90 days' notice. Are there any other persons that desire to submit a bid at this time? Okay, you're out of order, ma'am.
You asked if there was anyone here. You're out of order, and you're all...
Are you submitting a bid, ma'am?
How dare you?
Okay, you're out of order, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, city staff has evaluated the bid received, you know, from the South Side Network Authority and recommends that the authority be granted the non-exclusive master lease. We will now open a public hearing concerning the request of the South Side Networks Authority to be granted a non-exclusive master lease and use to occupy the city streets and the public right of ways and maintaining network facilities for communication services.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Okay, which one is this?
The public hearing. The public hearing.
The bid opening. Okay, ma'am.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. This is for the public hearing. J1.
J1, non-exclusive master lease. You know, it would help me to get ready with my displays and the time that I take. Y'all wouldn't play games with my rights. What you afraid of? One person who gives a damn about my city. And I do plan to take action. Just because you haven't gotten anything doesn't mean I'm not taking action. So you own, just because you own every law firm, okay? Okay, I have a right to be upset. I came here calm, quiet. Non-exclusive master lease for use of city, our right of way. Telecommunications service, Network Authority. You give the right of ways to Cox, Verizon. I spoke to Ms. Henley years ago about the problems with Cox. And y'all are the franchise authority. If we have problems with their bills, we come to you. So yeah, air right of ways, okay, Verizon and Cox. You have partnerships with Sanjay Cortifina, Undersea Cable. How safe is Undersea Cable? Somebody that's worked in submarines should know that that was outdated decades ago. They were great letters to the editor. Okay, that's J1.
That's the only item.
That's the only item up for discussion right now.
All right.
Mayor, we do have two other speakers signed up for WebEx.
Okay.
I'm going to call their names. I understand they're not showing up online. Okay, let me just do, let me go ahead and call them. Larry Mubern and Ann Mubern. They're not online. So they had signed up for WebEx, but they are not online.
So at this point, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, at this point...
You did this to George Menz, and you apologize, you and Sesams.
Okay, please. Thank you.
I'm going to bring you the copy.
Thank you. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will again have cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items that have been signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, if I may for just a moment, L1 had been pulled because we had some WebEx speakers signed up, but they aren't, they're the same individuals. They're just called. They're not online yet. Did you want to continue, do you want to have that pulled, or is that going to be on consent?
That can go on consent.
Yeah, that can go on consent.
Thank you. Ms. Messner? The only items that are pulled from consent, ma'am, are L2.
Wait one sec, please.
L2, L4.
Wait, wait, wait. L2? L4?
And under planning, M2 and 3.
M2 and 3.
So you'll be speaking on every item except those four.
Okay. Grant. You just gave away air money to private nonprofits. That's our money. You decide. You donate to them. And Sesams has helped certain groups. We have nothing against certain groups. It's just you can't pick and choose and use their money for them. And Moss backed off at one time, but since he's... Okay. Grant, non-exclusive master lease for telecommunications service to South Side Network Authority, SNA. Use of the city's public streets and right of ways to install, operate, and maintain network facilities. You know, with all the paving, the Verizon working whenever they want, on and off, it's a nonstop construction mess. Y'all violate OSHA, EPA, and people are getting killed trying to cross their roads and everything. Air public right of ways, that's for temporary. Okay. Three, name an inlet near Sandbridge requested by Ms. Henley. Ms. Henley, your full-page ad in the bias paper. No one has done more to preserve. No one has done more to destroy trees, wildlife, and taxpayer trust than you have since 1978. Even your ex-police chief had to retire at 65. I think it's past time for people... I think it's past time for people not to do false advertising and pay for a bias publication that's in air in all, you know, city, city facilities. Okay, Hampton Roads mitigation plan. You pollute, so how can you mitigate? Donate excess things to North Carolina and Alabama, political subdivisions. Why isn't things sold? I thought we had somebody watching out for our money. Grant, permits, emergency medical services, 12. Who has liability? We pay for all, you should have a full-force police-fire rescue and take care of them. Nobody said anything about the people being killed all over the region. It's just the cost of doing business for y'all. Okay, authorize temporary encroachments, city-owned property. There's nothing temporary. Rename bikeways and trails advisory committee. You know, I have the list of everyone you've appointed. It's massive. It's the illusion that you appoint who you want. There is no real, you know, due process. Appropriate 1.8 million. We have 3 billion debt and growing. Fund balance from the general fund, pass-through grant from Commonwealth Development. 125,000 from Aquarium Foundation. You subsidize tourism. MEB has their own office. MEB has funded certain people here, most of y'all. You can be as arrogant and smug as you want, but a few people do care, and I'm one of them. And seal tanks. There's homeless people dying every day. Y'all do not care. Using air money to have people foster too many pets. You shouldn't, they shouldn't be, it's not a recycle. It should be animal control. The beaches are contaminated and filthy. So, planning is separate, correct? Nope. Okay.
Mayor, you open a public hearing.
Okay, open a public hearing on planning.
Okay. I think this was 435 pages, the agenda which, you know, we don't get on time because y'all are too busy making changes. Reed Enterprises, Inc., and Liberty Transmission and Auto Care. Modification of proffers, conditional rezoning. There's no, it's selective enforcement of zoning. So I have to wait on the other items, correct? Or, no, I still have three minutes. Parking, parking's still an issue. Your mobility thing that you did not let me speak on that I was signed up for, it's a scam. It's a scam. Parking, parking is for events. You need to open the beach.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I appreciate you, too.
Okay. Rosemary, if you can...
All right, this is the consent agenda. Under ordinance and resolutions, number one, ordinance to grant a non-exclusive master lease on telecommunications services to Southwest, South Side, excuse me, South Side Network Authority, SNA regarding the use of the city's public streets and right of ways to install, operate, and maintain network facilities. Number three, resolutions to name an inlet near Sandbridge requested by Councilmember Henley. Number five, resolution to adopt the updated 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan. Number six, ordinance to donate excess sage lease, lethal deployment devices to two North Carolina and one Alabama political subdivisions. Number seven, resolution to grant permits to allow emergency medical services agencies to operate in the city. A American Lifeline Medical Transport, Inc., American Medical Response, Mid-Atlantic, Inc., Cardinal Ambulance Services, Inc., Children's Hospitals of the King's Daughters, ISC Medical Transport, LLC, Life Care Medical Transports, Inc., Midwest Medical Transport, LLC, Nottingham Regional Air Ambulance, Reliance Medical Transport, Robbie's Ambulance Service, Inc., Special Event Providers of Emergency Medicines, Inc., Tybalt Medical Transport, Inc. Number eight, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments and a portion of city-owned property. A, known as Harbor Canal located in the rear of 2329 Leeward Shore Drive regarding maintaining existing wood deck, wood dock, excuse me, tin wood piles, wood and steel boat lift, wood ramp, wood floating dock, vinyl bulkhead, and river dock. District 8 formerly District 6 Beach. B, known as Harbor Canal located in the rear of 2317 Leeward Shore Drive regarding maintaining existing vinyl bulkhead, boat lift, wood dock, and lamp post. Antic construct and maintain fixed wood dock, two floating wood docks, vinyl bulkhead, and aluminum ramp, District 8 formerly District 6 Beach. C, known as Lake Wesley located in the rear of 569 Virginia Deer Drive regarding to construct and maintain five wood guide pilings, a floating dock, kayak launch, and replace and maintain an existing wood ramp and four wood pilings, and relocate an existing floating wood dock. District 5 formerly District 6 Beach. Number nine, resolution to rename the bikeways and trails advisory committee to the active transportation advisory committee and to revise the committee's composition and mission. Number 10, ordinance to appropriate 1.8 million of fund balance from the general fund and authorize repayment to the Commonwealth of Virginia, a pass-through grant from the Commonwealth's Development or Opportunity Fund. Number 11, ordinance to accept and appropriate, A, 125,000 from the Virginia Aquarium Foundation to the Capital Project, number 1463, Virginia Renewal and Replacement, one to, number three, refurbishment of the Seal Tank Exhibit. And B, $3,000 from the VB Home Now to the FY 2122 Cultural Affairs Department operating budget regarding assisting with expansion of the brush works program.
Open a public hearing on planning?
Number one, Reed Enterprises, Inc., and Liberty Transmission and Auto Care, Inc., Reed Transportation, Inc., for modification of proffers to a conditional rezoning and additional use permit regarding auto repair garage and a conditional rezoning, excuse me, 341 Holland Road, District 2 formerly District 7, Prince of Sand. Number two, no, excuse me. And the last one is number four, Megan Calhoun, Calhoun for conditional use permit regarding a short-term rental at 405 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 108, District 6 formerly District 6 Beach, with Mr. Moss voting no.
Okay, and any other comments? Okay, the vote is open. Oh, wait. Pardon.
Did we have a second?
We had a second? Second. Okay, there we go.
Thank you. By a vote of, go ahead and, by a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting Mr. Moss's nay vote.
Okay, now we'll go back to the other items for discussion. And number two, ordinance to amend the city code, Article 2, Raid Noise, requested by Councilmembers Tower and Moss.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner will be Robert Ashburns.
Mr. Tower and Ms. Wilson, my reps who never respond to me. And how many, how many decades have I talked about noise and problems?
Could we please stick to the...
I am sticking to the issue. They brought, he brought it up. They are my reps. Excuse me. I do know what I'm talking about. Okay, noise, this is selective. What about the noise? I can hear it from Harris Teeter when y'all have events. You're only interested in the resort strip. Amending the city code, we need police directing traffic, keeping people safe in every neighborhood. In every neighborhood. We need events. Sorry, but there are enough events at the vibe. It's subsidized with city-state money and, and, you know, if you really care about the youth in our area, you would have events in those neighborhoods for those children. You wouldn't be having alcohol events and bringing everybody so you get the tax rate. And, you know, you brought this up before. I told you, there's cars speeding, the cars at the convention center this weekend. It's like a loud reverie party. You know, they were parking their cars. You selectively enforce what you want, when you want, and if you want, and that's discrimination. You're discriminating against other people. So I'm tired of you amending city codes for your benefit and not helping the rest of the citizens. Okay, are there any more?
No, ma'am. The next speaker is Robert Ashburns. After Mr. Ashburns is Kevin Joseph.
Ashburner.
I'm sorry. It looked like an S to me. I apologize, sir.
Hey, good evening.
Thank you. I first want to say thank you very much for continuing to work on the noise issues at the oceanfront. I sent everyone an email. I hope, I know Guy got it, Rosemary got it via Facebook, about what was going on this weekend at the oceanfront. It was out of control. And I'm just here to support your efforts to continue to improve the sound ordinances, to give our law enforcement the ability to enforce those for us as citizens, and would hope that we would even lower those decibels to 65, 65 dB from 75. So that's my take, and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next speaker is Kevin Joseph. After Mr. Joseph is Sarah Gerloff.
Hey, good evening.
Okay, my name is Kevin Joseph. I am a traveling performer. And I first visited Virginia Beach in 2020 at the beginning of the pandemic. I travel around the nation. I do a family-friendly show that's improv of people watching through with music. And during the time of uncertainty in, you know, with the nation and everything, I was able to come to a climate in the city that was very welcoming to the arts and things of nature, to the point where I've noticed that you guys have sanctioned artists on, you know, Atlantic Live and things of that nature. So fast-forwarding to 2022, last week, I came in contact with the article that spoke, that speaks to the, you know, the new amendments that you guys are proposing. And I think that it's kind of a blanket thing, and it's like, it can potentially create punitive damage to artists when you have other nuisances that are considered, to me, are considered noise versus art is creativity. And I just don't think that, I think that there should be more of an equitable involvement of everyone that has a stake in, you know, this amendment being altered or changed in any form, meaning not just the council members, the residents, the, you know, tourism, tourists, and things of that nature. So, and I don't know the full details on what's been proposed with the exception of, I think it's 100 feet during the day, 50 feet at night. And I actually, last night, I went and shot two different videos. There was two artists, sanctioned artists, one off of 19th, and I did a measure of my own. And I was able to hear from Atlantic Boulevard to the, maybe the railings of the boardwalk, I could hear this artist, and it's well beyond 50 feet. So I'm thinking, if that falls in line with what I saw being proposed, then even the artists that are sanctioned by the city would be in violation of what I saw. And that was at night. And further study on what I, when I started researching this, noise travels further at night than it does during the day. And there's some science behind that. During the daytime, it refracts up, so the noise goes up. In nighttime, the earth goes off, so it reverberates downward, so sound travels further. So 50 feet is definitely unreasonable. And I just, basically, I just feel that there should be more of an equitable state that everyone can have their voices heard beyond me before any changes are made to this type of...
Thanks a bunch. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Sarah Gerloff. After Ms. Gerloff is Daryl Clark.
Good evening.
So, Tower and Moss, you two should get an award for this one. It's so ridiculous, it made me laugh. Anyone who wants a good chuckle, I suggest you read the full description of this gobbledygook. Basically, the two of you are conspiring to infringe upon our rights by controlling the people by limiting the volume of noise we can make based on extremely confining parameters, and you are establishing a, quote, "hybrid penalty structure imposing civil penalties for repeat or severe violations, which the Department of Police shall be charged with administering and enforcing," end quote. So you two are under the belief that you can enforce an ordinance, thus attempting to turn it into law. Did you pay attention in government class? Well, remember those branches of government and that only the legislative branch, which would be the General Assembly, can actually make a law, and those laws must be in accordance with the supreme law, our Constitution. There's a reason our Constitution is referred to as supreme. It's because it protects our God-given rights, and it is not to be superseded. You two do not have the authority to make law. Plus, your ordinance infringes upon our unalienable, God-given right to liberty, thus violating our Constitution so it can never be law. By conspiring against our right to liberty, you are in violation of Title 18 U.S. Code 241, which is real law. It is also a head-scratcher to me that you would attempt to make law enforcement commit a crime by having them enforce a fake law. We have plenty of real criminals already to keep law enforcement busy, drug traffickers, sex traffickers, you. People like Aaron Spence, who is distributing obscene books to our schools for children to see. You know that distributing obscene material is a federal crime and always has been. Why has Aaron Spence not been arrested for distributing obscene material to minors? That's the question on the minds of many parents these days. Why do you keep trying to create new laws instead of enforcing the real laws we already have? Why are some laws enforced while others are not? Why are some laws enforced sometimes, but not other times? Why are certain people allowed to continuously violate real laws, but there is little action taken? Very unequal application of the law, I would say, and when you allow criminals to keep going on and crimes to perpetuate, you get more, more crime. I would like to propose that anyone that desires to be a representative in our servant government be required to pass a government IQ test and a mental evaluation before being allowed to take the seat.
The next speaker is Daryl Clark. Daryl Clark, Kat Porterfield. After Ms. Porterfield, sorry, will be Randy Thompson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, council members, I appreciate the opportunity.
Go ahead and pull the mic down a little bit. There you go.
Way down. To stand before you tonight, picture it, Virginia Beach, April 2019, nearly 50,000 people headed to our oceanfront, and what brought them here? Noise. The promise of good noise, the kind that comes from great music, unbridled joy and laughter. I wish you could have seen it, Vice Mayor Wilson. I wish, I wish you could have been here, you would have had the best seat in the House from your oceanfront balcony overlooking the festival, one you are now hoping to turn into your quiet place at the expense of the joy of others if you vote in favor of these changes tonight. I get it. I get it, not everyone is a fan of noise, even the good kind like music and laughter or a little late-night patio conversation. That's evidenced in the proposed amendment. The changes will give it more teeth, teeth to bite you in the pocket if you become an unfortunate recipient of the new proposed two hundred and fifty-dollar first offense fine. Teeth to give nasty neighbors a new way to bite at each other. Teeth to make charges stick as the current ordinance isn't leaving enough folks with criminal records. Because as was stated at your last meeting, most judges don't like saddling someone with a criminal record for a noise infraction. Also noted at your last meeting was that this was a result of thoughtful and researched work. Language borrowed from other cities and towns for this admittedly flawed proposal. The idea is get it passed and iron out the wrinkles later. So are we now beta-testing laws that carry hefty fines and the possibility of a criminal record? Mayor Dyer, you were so excited to get it in that you tried to get a vote going and had to be reminded that the public had a right to weigh in. And your vote to get to the yes was just going to have to wait. You've also forgotten that we live in a bustling city, not a sleepy hollow, an international vacation destination. And these changes, as they are written, pose a very real threat to our identity. Return to the drawing board. I'm not saying it's awful, but I'm saying it's wrong. This is not an issue that can be addressed with a broad brush. Consider designing an overlay map of quiet zones in those areas. We should reasonably expect those areas to be quiet and indicate what areas are likely to never be very quiet, like our resort area. It would be like the AQ's jet noise map we realtors use during the process of buying or even renting a home. If someone buys or rents a home in a high-noise area, it shouldn't be a surprise to them. But there is zero reason to diminish the joyfully loud oceanfront and strip away much of its charm and the cash that comes with that charm. We need more than just time and effort. We need you to agonize over this one, it's important. And focus on the muffler noise portion of this. Figure out how to outlaw them altogether. The impact these mufflers are having on our circle of life here, birds, animal navigation, their ability to forage. Thank you too, we are not okay.
Next speaker is Randy Thompson. After Mr. Thompson, we have one WebEx speaker.
All right, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much, I thank you all for the opportunity to be here. And I would thank you for bringing this amendment forward. We're, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Resort Advisory Commission. I'm Vice Chair of the Commission and Chair of the Oceanfront Enhancement Committee. Both on the Commission and through our committee, we've, we've discussed this issue that we have at the beach or in our resort many times and we were delighted to hear, uh, what we felt like was a very palatable solution to it. We're concerned about the image we project to our guests and to our residents and we believe that this, this ordinance will expedite real solutions. Where, when and where such noise problems are found. So we're, as, as the Resort Advisory Commission, we're in favor of this and hope that you are too. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one WebEx speaker signed up, Pamela Hamilton, I understand she is not online. So that is all the speakers.
Okay, at this point, um, do we have a motion?
Well, I think Mark wanted to talk about his changes.
You will see around your dais that we, that I, I passed out a, a one-page summary of two technical changes that talk about how a notice of violation would be delivered to someone found to be in violation. It's, it, instead of using the word served, it says delivered in person by or mailed, certified mail, and, and that's a distinction between, uh, process for a civil violation and process for a, um, a criminal violation. And so I believe that is an appropriate technical change, but it does not in any way change any of the substance.
Motion at this point?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
We have a second.
I'll second that, but I want to identify the document as the one dated June seventh, is that be correct?
It says revised on it as well.
Just, but just so we're citing this versus the agenda of the document.
Great, any other discussion at this point?
I have a second, secondary motion, um, to defer it. And, uh, I want to move to defer it just on the grounds of more community engagement. I think this is a pretty heavy ordinance. I understand the, the, uh, the speed in which we must act because of the tourist season here and there are many concerns at the oceanfront. But this, this has an effect throughout our entire city. And I think more public engagement is needed so we can get this right. I know we just got it last week and that's been our, our process, a week and then have a public hearing to be able to hear upon it. But I think more work has to be done with this so we can kind of, uh, I don't want this to have any adverse, uh, effects of implementing this and then causing adverse effects around the city. And so, um, I would move to defer it.
Okay, we have a second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second, uh, you know, for, um, you know, the other one. You know, I guess, you know, one of the things of my concern, yes, there was a need for something like this, but, you know, somebody brought up, uh, you know, churches and, you know, some of the things that maybe we haven't really quite considered yet. So, you know, I think maybe, um, you know, deferral may be judicious at this point, but that's my opinion. Okay, so, yes.
I thought I was going to be voting on this and then we could go back and, and tinker with it, but I think maybe the deferral is because of the church issue. But I also want to look at the moving vehicle issue because that really affects me where I, down where I live and the, and the noise factors that I hear and the complaints that I hear. And if we're going to defer it and relook at this, I'd really like to look there. There's loud music in these vehicles and trucks and I think Mr. Ashburner sent me some videos of really loud vehicles, uh, two or three o'clock in the morning that was quite disturbing. And it's, it's, it's a problem. It's, it's really a problem. People going across the bridge at General Bruce Boulevard are waking these, these motorcycles or waking people up at two o'clock in the morning. And it's, it's, it's not right. And these people have, just because they live down there, they have a right to some peace and quiet too, these hours. And they should be, some mufflers and all that, and I, I know it's, it's hard to get a, a moving target, but a lot of times we do have a lot of law enforcement down there that if they see it and they hear it, they can, they can tag it. So if we're going to be deferring this, I really would like for us to be looking at that issue as well.
Hey, Mr. Tower, Mr. Voluch.
I'm, I'm puzzled by the Vice Mayor's comments. Well, first I would say, hey, look, apparently it's, uh, not having the perfect ordinance is, uh, now the problem with this. The, the, I, this certainly deals with sensitive issues, you know, I don't doubt that. But this, this issue's been around for a good while, it's been discussed, the police have looked at it carefully, the city attorney's office has looked at it carefully. I think we have got about as good as an ordinance as we can get. I don't see the need for the deferral. And there, I'm afraid that deferring it, the, the items that you address as Vice Mayor about the noise are covered in this. We have taken the best shot at it we can. I'm not saying it's perfect, but we've tried, tried to deal with those as well. If we defer it so that we can deal with it better, um, I'm not sure we gain in the, in anything. If, if we find a better way to do it, we can amend it at some future date. But I don't know that we have a better way to deal with it now. And I'd urge us to adopt this and get on with enforcing it.
Michael.
Well, I'd, um, I, I would just like to state that I fully support the deferral. But I also want to just express my appreciation and respect for the members of this body and staff and public who have worked on this ordinance. And I do not want the perfect to be, I think the expression is perfect is to be the enemy of the good. Because I think we, we could have a good noise ordinance and, and, uh, but I, I do think there's more work to do. Just today, there were some questions raised, as Mayor mentioned, about churches and practice of faith. And Virginia Beach, of course, has a robust, has robust faith communities. And I think it's really important that we address that comprehensively. In the district where I represent, I also receive many, many concerns about noise that's related to cars and exhaust and the modifications of cars that occurs and congreg- and where cars congregate. I think we need to, we need to look at that very carefully. And also, address even more the concerns that were raised by the speakers here related to the resort. Although, as a point of clarification, I do think, I do have a question, Mr. Manager. Are permitted events such as the one referenced in April of two thousand nineteen, those are excluded from noise ordinance, is correct?
Commissioner Volucci? Yes, I think so, sir. I mean, the city attorney can clarify.
Yes, those are, those are, city permitted or sponsored events are exempted from the provisions.
And I, I thought so, I just wanted to offer that clarification for the public and, um, but, but I, I, I think that, uh, folks who are working on this have done a really great job. It's, it's difficult, I don't want to be perceived as piling on, but I do think we have a little more work to do. And, um, and I appreciate, you know, you all giving us the chance to do that, so thank you.
Good, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we first brought this up, we said if it came up tonight, depending upon the comments, we would decide if we would act on it or defer it. So that was the con ops on which you came forward on this agenda. But I do think we need to make sure that the manager, because they're going to get the calls first, is what do we, what is the city's response to the people who are suffering, not just at the oceanfront? But I'm sure you must get the same neighborhood calls I get about the music at eleven o'clock that you can hear down the block and we have no realistic way of enforcing it. So what is the time that we're taking? Because we're saying we have a risk of ambiguity. Okay, I, I can appreciate that. We have the real risk being incurred for the people who've asked us to put this together because they're being the victim of these parties, not just at the oceanfront, but in their neighborhoods with no legal enforcement. So we talking forty-five days? Are we talking after our July recess or the fact that people are going to be having the thing we were trying to deal with? So, I mean, there is two competing forces here. Right now, we have a real problem of something we can enforce that take place in neighborhoods all over the city. And it isn't churches that they're complaining about, I'm pretty certain, at ten o'clock at night or eleven o'clock or sometimes one o'clock. So what is the timeframe by which we are going to say, you know, better is the enemy of good enough? And apparently, we're not there yet. So when is that time? Because we are hearing from people, the institutions, and I'm not always, you know, a strong supporter of where the rack is, so I don't think I'm biased to what the recommendations are. But I think they're telling you something from an industry and for the neighborhoods that are out there, you know, everyone spoke from. So what is the timeframe of the motion that has been seconded in terms of bringing that back? I'm happy to continue to work with my good colleague, uh, Mr. Tower. We worked hard, the staff worked harder than we did to try to get to the, to the right answer. We knew we might not be quite there and you're telling us and the public stones were not. But what's the timeframe that we're going to come back? Hopefully, it's before our July recess to act.
Rose, okay, Rose, Mayor.
Please, I really, I knew this has been a long time coming. I really do appreciate the work, the job done and it's something that we really, really need. And we, we want, we want to get it, get it right. Mark, how long do you think it would take to shape it up a little bit more?
I, I'm going to need some direction as to what needs shaped up. I mean, there is, this, this ordinance already deals with vehicles, uh, vehicle noise. Uh, if, I, I will need to hear from members of the body what changes that they need to make, need to be made. We can certainly talk about churches, but I will tell you that what we did in this is we tried to, as much as possible, make these time, place and manner restrictions rather than based on speakers or, uh, the content of the speech. Because that makes it less subject to constitutional challenge. That was done intentionally. But if council directs us to reevaluate that, we can reevaluate that and we will come back at whatever time you tell us to come back.
So if the vehicle issue is settled, then, then we're dealing with the church issue, is that right, Bobby?
Well, can I make a suggestion possibly? I know we're not meeting on June twenty-seventh as a body. Can, Mr. Tower and I will both be in town, I do believe. Can we, with the city attorney, find the appropriate place, have a workshop and invite the stakeholders or principals, you can't have everyone, but find out some key people who represent the religious community and just, and just get their concerns so that we can say we've had that in a format that's not limited to three minutes and you can't have an interaction. But that would be a great day because we're not meeting and I certainly would be willing to be a participant in such a, an engagement if Mr. Tower would be so willing.
I, I think that's a fair request then, but I also concur that we, we should have a vote on this before our July recess. Would that be, uh, are you willing to modify that?
Yeah, no, Mr. Mayor, I think that's a great idea, I think, what is the first day?
July fifth and July twelfth are your two meetings in July.
I'd give it July twelfth.
July twelfth, I agree, July twelfth.
Okay, but have the workshop.
Absolutely.
So you're willing to modify that?
Well, I think we're not modifying, we're just saying we.
Yeah, yeah, in terms of the, uh, your substitute motion. Yeah, Dan. Okay, so, uh, we're going to vote, any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Danny.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify, um, what's the expectation for July twenty-eighth or twenty-seventh?
Is it workshop?
It's twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth, but are you saying a workshop for council as a body?
No, how about this council liaison on this issue? So it's a community workshop, not a council workshop, because that's not taking place.
And we'll work with you to set that up.
Super, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So between the city clerk's office and the communication office, we will work to put out information to the public. Would you also like us to see if we could do anything on the virtual end, like on speakvb.com?
If you can make that work, it's great, you're just the mystery innovator, thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, do I need to do? Yeah, yeah, okay, we need a second on the substitute motion, substitute again. Any other discussion? Is that we're going to, uh, vote to make the substitute motion the primary motion?
Can I just say, um, Mr. Mayor, again, I want to thank Councilman Tower and Councilman Moss and this body, for working on this agreement and, and getting to a place of compromise so the public can have more interaction, more understanding of what this ordinance actually does and what it doesn't. And if at the end of the day, we get back to where we are with slight bit of improvement, what we have done is gave the public an opportunity, um, to be invested in this ordinance that's had a significant impact through our city. And so, um, just want to thank council again.
Thank you. Guy?
I appreciate Mr. Rouse's comments. Can I just clarify, or is the, is the substitute motion now simply to defer this until the July?
Twelve. Yeah, that is, that is the intent of the, uh, substitute motion. The, the recommendation will be implemented to have the public engagement.
Mayor, can I just ask one other thing? Can I include the speakers tonight, their information for Mr. Moss and Councilman Moss and Tower, so they can reach out? We can.
I think that would be a very, very good idea. Okay, the vote is open for the deferral.
This is for the substitute motion.
Yeah, to make it, you know, to make, make it the primary motion, uh, motion.
The substitute motion, uh, to make this a primary motion has passed eleven to zero. So we will need to now, give me just a second so we can open a vote.
All right.
The vote to defer this to July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two is open. Mayor and Vice Mayor, may I have your vote, please?
Oh, okay.
Thank you. By vote of eleven to zero, this ordinance has been deferred to July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Now we need a motion to, uh?
No, that was.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Thank God, all right. No, but I'll tell you what, this is a very important discussion and I think it's a judicial, judicious action on our part to do that.
Mr. Mayor, could I make, just make one more comment? I, I do want to emphasize for those who are interested in this issue and want to pursue it that, uh, this is a highly technical constitutional issue. And if you feel strongly about it, um, the, please, please try to get as much backup as you can for the legal side. We, we have a problem of enforcement, we have a noise problem in this city. I don't think there's any question about it. I hear about it every day, from guests, from residents, and I think most council members do. But we really have, need you to understand that the way that this is, uh, ordinance is worded is to try to give us an enforceable noise ordinance. So enforceability from a legal standpoint. So enforceability from a legal standpoint, I'm not trying to say this just so we can make it more complicated. It really, it really is not terribly complicated, but understand there are, every bit of this ordinance, as it is drafted, has been done with a view towards making sure that the ordinance is, in fact, enforceable. So having, spent, you spending a lot of time and telling us what should be in the ordinance when it is not legally enforceable is probably not very helpful to you or to us. So do your homework, and we're happy to have, have all the help we can get in making this the best ordinance.
Yeah, but I think public dialogue could also serve as an education tool, too. So, yes.
Mr. Mayor, to the two council liaisons, I'm assuming, and I don't want to volunteer the city attorney, but I'm assuming you probably want to, with your comments, Mr. Tower, you probably want the city attorney to give the same amazing presentation he gave a couple weeks ago, or something similar to that at the, on the meeting on the 28th.
Sure, I think we'll make, we'll, we'll make the city attorney available to try to explain any and every part of it.
He's smiling already.
I'm sure he'd look forward to that.
And we'll give you a megaphone, too. Okay, thank you. When in doubt, delegate, what can I tell you?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. All right, moving on to number four, ordinance to award a $5,000 community services micro grant to Men of Faith for Youth Development Camps and Academies, where he support various youth development camps and academies from June 20, 2022 through December 2022, requested by council member Branch. Do we have any speakers on that?
Yes, sir, thank you. The first speaker is Barbara Massner. After Ms. Massner will be Sarah Gerloff.
Okay, $5,000 award, micro grant, Men of Faith for Youth Development Camps and Academics Support Various Youth Development Camps and Academies. Requested by Branch. Mr. Branch, I'm sure you might remember one of the best police officers we've had, Rich Denopoli. He had the PAL program, and he worked with the youth. You know, going out in the woods with the Boy Scouts is not the same as working with all citizens. And, you know, I resent the selective use of grants for who you want, which is usually for votes. And I already brought up Ms. Henley in this magazine, in the conflicts, but also, I would greatly appreciate if this 1991 picture of our council member was changed, and that in this publication that's allowed in here, speaking of rights, that they only put in here not hearsay, but legitimate candidates who are already certified, not rumors and all this mess. And for somebody who pretends to care about, you know, the red-tailed hawks and, thought you'd appreciate that.
I do, I like that.
Here, I'll send you one.
I'd like to see it up close.
Is there a vote on that?
It's nice to see you still hitting the gym, Aaron.
Yeah.
But. You know, we need to be an expert on everything in the city and all youth and air environment,
air environment. You know, you should have known about Owl's Creek and, you know, everybody that was fighting to save that. So I'm glad you, you have a sense of humor. Thank you.
Sometimes we need one.
Okay, so is that it for this one? Or is there anything else? I, I mean, y'all pull things in and I, okay, so is there anything else that I'm speaking on, or?
This is the only item.
No, this is the only item we're talking about right now.
All right.
The next speaker is Sarah Gerloff, if, after Ms. Gerloff is, yes, anti-advocate.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, Branch, you get spotlight this time. So, first, since we are a government by consent, I do not consent to our tax dollars being used to fund this special interest group. The reasons I do not consent are as follows. Number one, our tax dollars are to benefit the whole, not the few. Men of Faith is clearly a special interest group of the few. By giving our money to this special interest group, you would be misappropriating funds, also known as embezzlement. Number two, by giving money to a certain group, you are showing favoritism, unequal treatment, which creates division, another step toward communism. Number three, by giving our money to this special interest group, you would be putting your hand into the cookie jar that is to be used to pay our city employees, thus taking money out of their paychecks. As I've said before, all the world is a stage. Branch, it appears you are playing the role of reverse Robin Hood, stealing from the working taxpayers that grow poorer by the day to give our money to your special interests. Absolutely no integrity left in your body.
The next speaker is anti-advocate.
How's it going, everybody?
Going great.
So, I'm not really sure. Hi, I'm anti-advocate, I'm Latonya Snow. My nephew is Xavier Hill. He was killed by the Virginia State Police. I'm not really sure what the Men of Faith organization is. I didn't get enough time to look up, to look it up, but I feel any program that they're presenting to Virginia Beach is a positive thing, because Virginia Beach is going in a negative direction. You guys know I'm wearing orange, because this is Gun Balance Awareness Month, so it would have been great if you guys would wear orange. I work with the Shayla Harris's family. Again, my nephew is Xavier Hill. I sat here and listened to you guys talk about noise, and I kind of feel like we need to be using our time to discuss our youth and our future, because they're going to make noise. I'm one of the people with the loud radio, so sorry, but we're going to make noise. You know, you guys made noise when you were younger as well, so don't put a level on our noise-making. It's not time for that. But as far as making a program for our youth, I would be for it. Like I said again, we're supposed to be doing something for the Shayla Harris. I have yet to meet with you, supposed to be having a lunch together to discuss it for her. So we are going to be doing these things, we're going to stick to our word and be consistent in what we're doing. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Speaker, sir.
Okay, all the speakers, Mr. Branch.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you can tell by the agenda, Men of Faith is a mentoring organization, and they do a lot of things with the youth, and they raise private donations as well, but this is a micro grant from the city, and I'm proud to have sponsored it, and I'll make a motion for approval.
I have a question for Linwood. Are, is the, I'm looking at the balance of the difference, is the more resources they have, does that mean that more people can participate? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what's enabled, since there's no cost for the people to participate, would the number of eligible participants grow? Because I'm only mentioning this for one reason, because it's not the maximum grant they could receive, as you realize, it's 10. And also, it said we had, we had, this is in the budget, so we're not going outside the normal process discussions we've had, which is great, I like that a lot, but there still is a balance of 5,000 in the count. And anything we do for youth, that's why I'm so big on scouting, anything we can do for youth pays dividends forever. So I didn't know if subject, the motion could be amended, if, in fact, they can come back to the manager and show cause that it would allow them to expand the number of eligible participants, the grant could be as much as $10,000, and therefore, we could do more for the youth in our community. That was my suggestion.
Well, that was the amount Ron Taylor requested, and I think all of y'all know Ron, or many of you do, and he's pretty good with money, and that's the amount he needed. So that's the amount I was willing to sponsor.
All right.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Okay, if I could say, you know, one of the points of discussion that we've been having on a regional and even local letter with the vice mayors, you know, getting together, and one of the things in the world we need today are constructive things for youth to do in a very positive way. You know, we're focused, we're focused today, focusing on that locally, but also, we're talking with the local mayors about, you know, coming up with these type of interventions that will outreach into the community and, you know, really serve. And John, I really appreciate your comments, because, you know, these type of things are value-added in terms of what we're trying to accomplish in moving forward. So I wholeheartedly support that. Okay, at this point, the vote's open.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have adopted the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to planning, and the first item is BT Holdings II LLC and PDC, TNFL VPIV LLC, PT Holdings II LLC, for modification of proffers to a conditional rezoning and rezoning from AG1 Agricultural District and conditional I1 Light Industrial District to I1 Light Industrial District, Ray Industrial Building at Dam Neck Road and Harper's Road, District 5, formerly District 7, Princess Anne.
Eddie Burdon for the applicant.
Hello, Mr. Burdon.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, Honorable Members of City Council. It is indeed my privilege to come before the council this evening representing Panatoni Development Company, PDC, as well as BT Holdings 2 LLC and Ms. Barbara Creach. Ms. Creach's family's owned this property for over a century. With me this evening, Ms. Creach is here, along with Mike Inman, her legal counsel, and Mr. Bill Hudgens, one of the principals with Panatoni Development is here, along with Dave France with Kim Lee Horn in Virginia Beach, who's the project engineer on this project. The subject property is 161 acres in size. It's located on the south side of Dam Neck Road, extending eastward from its intersection with Harper's Road, over 4,000 linear feet. Again, 161 acres. The property is partially in the greater than 75 BBN highest noise zone around NAS Oceana, and partially in the 70 to 75 high noise zone around NAS Oceana. 132 of the acres are currently zoned AG, and this is a request to rezone that acreage to I1 Light Industrial. 28 and 3/4, call it 29 acres of the property were zoned I1 Light Industrial District in 2015 for a bulk storage yard that was never created. Most of that area, which is at the northwest section of the property, is also uncovered by a restrictive use easement taken by the United States Navy, or the United States on behalf of the Navy in 1981, which limits its utilization to light industrial. We are seeking to vacate the original conditions with the 2015 zoning, so that all 161 acres will be zoned I1 Light Industrial District. Our comprehensive land use plan has called for this property and all of the property in this area in the two highest noise zones that were not previously zoned and developed residentially to be used for light industrial economic development, both diverse, to diversify our economic base as a city and to protect the continued viability of NAS Oceana. This longstanding land use recommendation, which has been in place for the entire 40 years that I've been practicing law in my hometown, was significantly strengthened 17 years ago after the BRAC process and the resulting memorandum of understanding on a regional basis entered into with the Department of the Navy. This property is squarely within the Strategic Economic Growth Area 3, or the SEGA 3 area designated under comp plan, and it is due west of the corporate landing commercial park that the city developed a number of years ago. The proposal involves the development of a multi-story state-of-the-art e-commerce robotics regional fulfillment center, which will employ approximately 1,000 persons in good and very, very good paying jobs with great benefits. And the very substantial, extremely substantial capital investment it will bring to our community is exactly the type of quiet, clean, environmentally compatible, light industrial development that Virginia Beach has aspired to attract to our strategic economic growth areas for decades. The fulfillment center is an exceptionally high-tech operation. It uses robotics and state-of-the-art software, digital software. It is essentially a very modern warehouse, receiving significant quantities of all manner of products, relatively small products, not large, in size. They are inventoried, so to speak, but not like, you know, inventories and warehouses that we've all seen. And as orders are received, products are gathered by the robotics, they're packaged, and they're delivered from this fulfillment center to final mile delivery partners such as UPS, USPS, FedEx, and their own final mile distributors such as the facility that this council approved less than a year ago on the north side of Dam Neck Road. There's absolutely no retail component to this facility whatsoever. There's no public access to this facility. No products are delivered from this facility to anybody's home or business. The only folks that would be coming to this facility are employees and deliveries to and from the facility. There's only one entrance to the building, and that's facing south. You can see the sea of parking in the front, one entrance. It's a totally secure building, and that's employees only. The plan has an access shown for the trucks off of a full intersection at Dam Neck Road and the southeastern Parkway Green Belt alignment, okay? The alignment, there is city right-of-way, only the southern, basically the southern third is an existing city right-of-way. The rest is on the BT Holdings property that the city has not acquired, but this is the alignment that has existed in our comp plan, again, for 40 years. The real estate contracts that were used when properties in these adjoining neighborhoods of Mayberry and Prince George Estates all had disclosures about the southeastern alignment in it before those laws were developed and before any homes were built. We, with this, with this application, are suggesting that that is the, the best available alignment, so this facility has two points of access, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But as is proposed, trucks, you know, 95-plus percent will come in off of Dam Neck Road. The very first entrance off of Dam Neck Road is the entrance for the trucks. It's gated, it's secured. All of the loading docks are located either on the backside facing north or the east side facing east, away from the residence of Prince George Estates. There are then a number of accesses to the parking lot, and then there's a second road depicted as Road B. Now, understand, the development you're seeing up here is all predicated upon a development agreement between the Panatoni folks on behalf of the end user and the city of Virginia Beach. That is certainly not happening tonight, and it will be probably a number of months before that happens. The pink line you see on the east side of that southeastern expressway and Green Belt alignment, that is the area that Dominion Power seeks to utilize for its transmission lines, taking energy from the offshore wind energy. taking energy from the offshore wind energy project that is currently before the State Corporation Commission. But we're showing that on here, just, you know, again, showing conceptually how this might work, but it all is again predicated on there being a development agreement with the city as all the different pieces fall into play. The, the building is five stories, it's a 650,000 square foot footprint. It has, you know, state-of-the-art facilities as well as state-of-the-art facilities for the employees and I won't go into the whole list. There will be two shifts at this, at the facility and we will coordinate with the Department of the Navy to make sure that the shift change times, and there's a fair amount of time between, they don't all come and go at the same time. They, they have work to do with the robotics inside the facility, but the shift changers will be set up so they do not conflict with the shifts going into NAS Oceana so that they're not all on the road at the same time. Now, the zoning ordinance requires us to provide a 25-foot landscape buffer, category-two landscaping between industrial and residential uses. The two industrial uses to the west that you see up here were developed before this. That's all they have. With this, there will be a 50-foot wide, 10-foot tall landscape buffer and that has actually been already put to record by Ms. Creach in a private deed restriction or a deed restriction given to the city of Virginia Beach so that if this development doesn't happen under a development agreement, those protections of all that extra landscaping for those homeowners on the, on the north side of Prince George State are locked in and that's been recorded before we're here today. The applicant is willing to go further and actually buffer the houses along Road A.
Eddie, you got the red light.
Okay, well, it's recommended for approval by Planning Commission, recommended for approval by your staff and we think it's a great opportunity for the city and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Burdon?
So, I forgot what you called it. It's been recorded for Ms. Creach with the city. That's called a...
It's a declaration of covenants and conditions and that has been recorded, which mandates that were the development agreement that, and this user to not happen for some reason, that any, any industrial development of this property is mandated to have a 75, minimum, minimum of 75-foot wide vegetated buffer with category-two landscaping on the first 25 feet and a 50-foot wide, 10-foot tall berm with landscaping on it as well.
And so even if this doesn't get built, that will be in place because that's recorded and it runs with the...
In perpetuity and the city has been, is provided in the document with the legal authority to enforce it through the zoning administrator. Yes, ma'am.
And so you talked about the development agreement and I think this development agreement is really, really important. So at the meeting that we were at last night, this development agreement is going to be a very big public process.
Yes.
And Mr. Adams said that there would be a lot of public input and it would include, it would include working with the community groups, the neighborhoods, having representation from different people and to be working with lots of folks in developing this development.
The development agreement will be a collaborative process. The, as you have described, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to, we'd had previous meetings, but I wasn't able to make the meeting last night because of a funeral. The, the, the one thing I want to mention in that respect, it is imperative to make the cut for this facility with the end user. That, and they're, they're being very picky for a number of reasons, the economy being one. They're requiring that there be two access points on different roads. One is basically an emergency, a backup, you know, access. And so there is a necessity for having an access off of either London Bridge or Harper's to London Bridge or theoretically through Corporate Landing to General Booth Boulevard.
And that doesn't have to be determined tonight.
None of this being determined tonight.
That is not being determined.
But I just wanted to put that out there.
That's going to happen with the development agreement.
Correct.
And there'll be a lot of input from...
That's, that is 100% correct.
They'll be worked out with the city and the developer and with a lot of public input.
And this council will have to hear that. I don't want to get in the way of Mark and, and your staff. And, and this is just a concept, concept of how a road could be, you know, provided using that right-of-way, including multipurpose trail to connect to the very significant multipurpose trail along all of Dam Neck Road and that, that also connects to General Booth Boulevard going up to the oceanfront. The intermodal capabilities that this helps enhances is very good. But there is, you know, those are kind of the parameters we have to deal with, but we are not here making you vote on this, this road.
Tonight, the vote is only for the rezoning to light industrial and that's going to be protected by the, by the deeds of covenants that is recorded with the city.
Correct. And if, if that, if this weren't to happen, the, the, the road and the alignment, that, that all becomes moot. It's not to say that there might not be a need to have or desire to have access from Dam Neck other than the existing median and curb cuts that are, that are in the middle of the property, but that most likely would be what would be used and this whole road situation was, would likely not be, you know, an issue. But that, that is not what we expect nor that we want and that's not what the city wants either, I'm sure. But it will be a process and it's not going to, it needs to move ahead smartly, but it is not something we have to wait for this, this state to make its decision on whether the, the power lines are underground, above ground. All those things have yet to be determined.
And so just so the council knows, it, Taylor Adams and Bobby Ton and I met with a lot, a lot of the neighbors last night and we talked about a lot of these things. So anyway, just, anyway, thank you so much, Eddie.
Oh, sure.
Good, Barbara.
Yeah, and I also met with the neighbors last Saturday, but this declaration of covenants and conditions has already been put to record.
Yes, ma'am.
It's put to record the 6th of June yesterday.
It is.
And this deals with the 75-foot wide buffer.
Yes, ma'am.
That's in addition.
And the component.
Wording that says that this shall accompany any other industrial development of the property as defined in the code of the city of Virginia Beach. So this is to protect in the event that something happened with this plan, that if we rezone it tonight industrial, any industrial use built there would follow this agreement.
That is, that is absolutely correct. And because if it's not, if it's under the development agreement based on these plans, it's, it's, it's really the same because that plan also provides for the potential, but we wouldn't know at this point, that there would be the same, maybe not the same arrangement, but the BMPs in there as well. Because the way this buffer is now, with the exception of one house, one property, you know, the remainder, it's more than 75 feet, okay? And that, and that's likely what would happen under that scenario, but we, we have no, no way of knowing at this point. But the idea is to give the same level of protection for the people who are most impacted. The development agreement would also include, you know, protection if, if this, you know, alignment of the southeastern were to be used in some form or fashion where there are 10 houses at a butt that, that, you know, this, this end user has agreed to either fence and add landscaping. There's the three houses that have none now, it's cultivated, but they're willing to even put the berm down there. But there's probably, we don't know how many feet, there would be enough feet to put, to put a 10-foot-high berm down the, between the road and the houses if, but that's just one of, one of many options that we'll have to wait and see.
All of that deals, what you're saying now would deal with that property to the, the far, whatever direction that is, over by the, the potential road.
East, yes.
But this agreement deals with the buffer.
The north.
To the north.
Where the, where the industrial development is, not the road.
Already is and so forth and it, it simply gives an additional 75-foot buffer in addition to what's required by the city.
Right, same thing that they have seen.
This is for those properties that are away from the road.
Right.
But abutting the actual industrial property itself.
Yes, ma'am.
Just so everybody's clear on what we're talking about.
And that includes trees on the buffer, I mean, not just the ones on the upgrade, but on the, the 10-foot buffer and we, you all have the packages that shows what everyone's seen as far as the, as those, that, what that berm amounts to, which is a very, very substantial, it's larger than the one along, along Dam Neck Road.
Okay, just so, it, it gets confusing when you're looking at the entirety of Prince George's Estates.
Right.
Because they're really different.
There are.
Different sections to deal with depending on what you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
So this deals with the part of the property that actually will join the industrial property.
All, all of the area that has the green except for this area along here, which is adjacent to the road.
Very good.
That's the area that we're, that we're talking about in that document, yes, ma'am.
And so if we vote on this tonight to rezone the property to industrial, this is what will be definitely in effect.
That's, that's already in effect and, and that's, that's already in effect. It's already been, it's already been put to record. You know, we certainly need this to move forward with the development agreement, we need this to be rezoned, but it would still, just to be hypothetical, even if it weren't, it's already in effect. Because again, it isn't going to be anything but industrial because that's what our comp plan has recommended for 40 years and the Navy, we're not going to put anything out there other than industrial. So it's just, it's doing, candidly, it's doing something, this creature acknowledges, I've, I've told her that when the houses were built, you know, way back when, they should have put, the builder should have been, should have made them put a berm in then. But anyway, but that's, that's what it's doing, is protecting them.
Some concern that because this is not a conditional industrial zoning, that maybe they're not, but this, this sort of protects this condition at least.
It's Mrs. Creach's, you know, you know, basically what she told the planning commission with the letter, she's followed through. She is on her own guaranteeing that that buffer, which far exceeds frankly anything else that's, that's been done where residential abuts industrial, light industrial in that area. And she's putting that, she's already put that to record.
Okay, already, okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else for Mr. Burdon? Okay, next speaker.
The next speaker is Mr. Odom, Ray Odom, and he is representing a neighborhood, I understand. Is that correct, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So he'll receive 10 minutes.
I retired from planning, 41 and a half years with the city, 36 and a half with planning. I was the planner for the Development Services Center and I used to prepare these planning commission reports with current planning. I live in Prince George Estates and I'm the vice president of the Homeowners Association and I do want to thank Mr. Branch and Mr. Jones for speaking with me on the phone and especially Ms. Henley for coming out and meeting with us on Saturday and Ms. Wilson last night along with Taylor and, and Bobby. I know I only have a couple of minutes here, so I'm going to try to do this. Basically, I'm a city planner, that's what I was. And in planning, you don't put industrial next to residential, but I've explained to my, my neighbors that we have ACOS and that is what's going to take place. The only two issues I had, and they were the same issues if I was sitting behind my desk and I was in one of our agenda meetings looking at the planning items for the next month, is the road going from London Bridge up there that could carry industrial traffic, tractor-trailers and all next to single-family homes. You know, that goes against all planning practices and principles. You're not supposed to place industrial next to residential because of the noise and what have you, the fumes or whatever you can have from those type of uses. This is a 3.8 million square foot distribution center that's in Suffolk. It is located on a one-way-in, one-way-out street. I, Mr. Burdon has said that since this facility was built, that, that this tenant here, that we're not supposed to talk about, requires two entrances. I have been, I did volunteer, did volunteer my time to work with the development agreement and work with, with the development. Taylor has agreed to that and Mr. Burdon has agreed to that, to work with this to see that maybe we could come up with an alternate second access point that would not affect our neighborhood. You know, it's bad enough that we have to have industrial next to us, but to actually take and put a roadway right behind these people's houses, I'm sure none of you would want that behind your house. I mean, yeah, we talk about berms and all, but it's still going to be noisy and that type of thing. Hopefully, we can work on something. I know Ms. Henley called me this morning and said that we can still work on that when we do with the development agreement. One thing I do want you to understand though is even though we've, they've put that berm and everything, that development agreement to record, that if this, anything goes wrong, anything at all, this project doesn't get built, whoever that property owner is at that time has straight I1 zoning in your special economic development area. They can put any use that goes in the industrial, in the I1 there, any use, they can subdivide it, they can put many uses in there, that, and this is the last large piece of this, of property that we can do industrial, really in our city. So I want you to understand that, that the city will lose all controls on that property when it comes to the development of the property.
Okay, any questions? Yeah.
What's the berm? What, what the berm you're talking about, it's on the, the red line right there, the?
What, what I understand, I'm the one messing with Mr. Burdon.
Okay.
They're talking about the area back here.
That berm there, okay.
That is where they're talking about putting the berm and all in, in case, because you are rezoning this as straight I1 zoning. So like I said, if this doesn't go through, that property owner then would only have, if he didn't do that, then you'd only have to meet minimum setbacks, minimum landscaping, and you're still only going to have minimum landscaping or minimum setbacks without that in any use that's allowed within the I1 zoning. You're going to lose, the development authority is going to lose control of that property if this does not go through. They will have straight I1 zoning, they can subdivide it out, they can do anything they want to with it once the zoning is approved. I just wanted you all to understand that.
Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
This has already been recorded.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you can probably get a copy of it and I'll, I'll certainly make, so you've got...
No, I have, Eddie gave me a copy.
You did, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
And like I said, they've assured that I would be able to work with, but that's what I used to do.
I'm sure the civic engagement is going to be at a very, very high tempo on this.
I hope so and hopefully we can come up with alternative so we don't have to put that road in adjacent to my neighbors.
Yes, thank you very much for your involvement.
Thank you, thank you all and like I said, thank you all for coming in.
And thank you for our service to the city.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mike Myers. After Mr. Myers is Barbara Messner.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening. How are you all today?
Great.
Lost my little paper here. All right, so first I'd like to thank you for coming out, thank you for coming out Saturday. I thank you guys for coming out last night. Sorry you weren't a lot in the house, but we had music lessons with the kids, so we had to hang out in the garage. But it's okay.
Once those noise ordinances are on.
Yeah, we couldn't have our meeting because it'd be 50 feet to the street, but whatever, we'll get around that.
We had a garage party.
All right, so just a couple of things. One, I did drop off those petitions that we did talk about, we did have a petition. Scarlett started it for us, it has almost 500 signatures on it. So I just wanted to drop that off for your awareness, I made copies, so you should have that. Just three things I want to talk about. I want to talk about the road, I want to talk about trucks and I want to talk about the development agreement and I know the issue with the road is going to be resolved at a later date, right? But, you know, everyone keeps laying on, well, there's this southeastern expressway from 40 years ago that was supposed to go through there and I've seen how they build those four-lane roads that cut through neighborhoods and they put up sound walls and, and it's intrusive, but it is for the greater good, you know, but they put up sound walls and they have standoffs and landscaping and stuff like that. So as this development agreement comes about, that's, those are some of the things that, you know, that I, I think that's a reasonable expectation and that's not stuff that's currently being talked about. You know, there's the, the Road A, I believe is what it's called to the south that comes off the corner there and goes down to London Bridge Road. You know, that's, obviously, I live in Prince George Estates and we don't want that road. The folks in Mayberry were there at the meeting last night and they don't want the road. Does the city really need the road? Do we really need to spend the money and the maintenance on that road when we have Harper's Road right down the street? And then it's not really that bad to drive all the way around the block to get back home. And then does the client really need the road? If he needs that secondary access because of flooding in the area, maybe this isn't the right site for... the right site for him, because we're 12 feet above the ocean, we're going to have flooding. That's just part of living in Virginia, in Virginia Beach. The next thing I'd like to talk about real quick is something that's kind of outside the scope of this drawing, right? We focused a lot on this drawing, but we haven't really, I don't know what planning has been done, oh, to accommodate the trucks. 457 trucks coming down London Bridge Road every day? Where are they going to eat? Where are they going to get gas? What's the infrastructure that's going to support those truckers? Where they're going to park is a very big concern. Are they going to be allowed to idle? And where are they going to be allowed to idle? And just finally, as they, as we move forward with the development agreement, you know, this thing is being kind of pushed through, there's a lot of reasons for it, a lot of good reasons for the community that were explained, you know, but there's a lot of eggs in our basket on this development agreement, so we look forward to working with you on it.
Oh, thank you, be assured.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Arlene Painter.
Good evening, Taylor, Mr. Tahan, Mr. Burdon. You know, I was notified when this first came through, and I asked to be updated a couple of years ago. BT Holdings, LLC, PDC, BEZOS, Amazon. They can afford whatever they want, this is the wrong location. Why wasn't Red Wing notified? You know, we backed up to this property. A lot of people have moved from Red Wing because they saw this coming, and they know that you do what you want, when you want, and it's not your property or Economic Development Authority property, it's public property, it's ours. The Military Aviation Museum was the number one attraction, family attraction. And because the traffic, when they had events, was an issue for y'all, you forced Mr. Yagan to build a turn lane. You know, this is, I, I appreciate that last speaker. This is the wrong location, it's the wrong developer, and it's, we have crime. Anybody who drives around here, all these trucks, they tear down light poles, you know, all this Cox cable, all this right-of-way, everything gets torn down. The light, the lights, everything. General Booth, Dam Neck, Oceana, they're racetracks. Anybody who drives on these roads knows that you can hear the noise five blocks away. Also, if you drive around, you'll see all the crosses all around here, because the police do not enforce speeding. They do not enforce speeding. They, they go to the, to the crash site. Cars go 70, 80 miles an hour, I can hear it five blocks back. And jets are a minimum of 120 decibels. It's not any of this 55, 75 mess. We have debt, no new debt. Stop corporate welfare, abolish Economic Development Authority. They don't make money, they don't give jobs. The jobs are for stealing all these private companies. Stop corporate welfare, taxing the poor middle class.
Thank you very much.
For private developers and their pet banks.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Arlene Painter. After Ms. Painter, B. Allen Painter.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak tonight. My name's Arlene Painter, and I'm a homeowner in Prince George's Estates. I want to thank Ms. Wilson, Ms. Henley, and I forget your names, sorry. But thank you all for coming last night and, and meeting with us, we really appreciate it. I'm, I'm speaking in opposition of the unconditional rezoning request that was approved at the May 11, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. My main concern is the portion of Road A, which will go between Prince George's Estates and Mayberry, and Road B, which will run behind a large number of our homes. I don't think anyone's pointed out Road B, that is, the, Road A runs along from Dam Neck to London Bridge, and Road B is that other road that runs in between the two retention ponds, or whatever they're called. We understand that the area where Road A is planned was previously planned for the southeastern expressway, potentially a busy road, but this road would have been a road for public use. While the road will be able to, while the public will be able to use the road, which is planned to go from Dam Neck to London Bridge, it really is for the benefit of the applicant. There are currently two full access points off of Dam Neck Road, with another proposed full access point. It doesn't make sense to have an access onto London Bridge Road between these two neighborhoods. Getting out of our neighborhood is often difficult because of the bend in the road where Road A is proposed to come out. Adding an additional access point onto, onto London Bridge will make it impossible to turn left out of our neighborhood. Road B gets as close as 112 feet to the back of one of our homes. And that's at the point on the map where the, the berm kind of goes like that. When you deduct their backyard, this is less than a half an acre, which is smaller than most of the lots or all of the lots in Prince George's Estates. Pretty close for a road that will likely be used by large numbers of tractor-trailers. Road B needs to be removed from the plan, or at least shortened significantly. We have heard that the potential purchases, purchasers want to be good neighbors. Good neighbors wouldn't put a road that close to a neighborhood where there are other options. We understand that the landowners and potential purchasers have the right to use their land to make money, but they should not be able to do it to the detriment of the homeowners of our neighborhood. We heard early, a little bit earlier about noise, and tractor-trailers are loud, and they're going to be behind our homes. And we all deserve to get a good night's sleep. So thank you for your consideration and not approving this change.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Allen Prince. And then we have one additional speaker, who will be Tha Webex.
Hey. Hi, how are you? Thank you for hearing me. It's good to be here tonight. I came right from a five-year-old dance recital, so it was a very exciting night for me. My name's Allen Prince. I've been a resident in Prince George's Estates for 12 years. We built in 2010. And I'm actually where the trees end, the trees coming down Road A, where they end, that's where my yard begins, like where the pool is. So thanks for that. The trees ending right there is pretty cool. But I heard Mr. Burdon say that 95% of trucks will use, should use Dam Neck Road to, to enter and get off. I represent one of the families that will smell the plumes of exhaust that will flow over a seven-foot privacy fence that's there now, black clouds that will shower my children as they jump on their trampoline at the back of the property. Same kids that won't hear me yelling at them to get out of the exhaust cloud, because my voice was drowned out by the sound of hissing air brakes and, from a road that's 50 feet from the back of my, my property. I didn't see that actual proposed amendment to the sound ordinance that Councilman Moss and Councilman Tower were proposing, but how far is far enough for 5% of 500 to 1,000 big rigs? How far away is that? How far is enough of that from my backyard for me to not, not hear it at 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year? 2,000 trucks on prime day, I'm guessing? To be clear, the, the majority of the people that I've spoken with in our neighborhood, we're not, nobody's fighting the project itself. It's good for development, it's, I think it'll be a good business, that's my opinion at least. But we'll absolutely fight to protect our way of life. I mean, we've put a lot of money, a lot of time, we raise good kids that play together outside, and, and this is going to change a lot. I mean, no matter, we hear a lot of, you know, they shouldn't use this, they shouldn't use that exit, the truck shouldn't, but shouldn't doesn't cut it. You know, if this road is coming, then it has to have the proper, in my opinion, it has to have the proper conditions in place to, to protect the people that have been there for a long time. And our, and the way of life that we've, you know, grown accustomed to, so. Change, we know it happens, but just, I ask that each one of you ask yourself, you know, if this was your backyard, this is where your kids were playing, how, how okay with you, are you with, with voting yes on big rigs, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, going through there? 5% of 1,000, still a lot of trucks. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thanks a bunch.
The last speaker is Tha Webex, Sandra Schenabarger. Ms. Schenabarger, if you will pause two to three seconds before beginning, beginning to speak, you are unmuted.
Hi, I'm neutral regarding Amazon. I realize it might be a nice opportunity for Virginia Beach, but I have a few reasonable suggestions that I hope will be passed along regarding building plans. One is keep the patch of 700 trees on the, at least 700 trees on that property, which is conveniently not in the drawing. I don't know why the trees aren't in the presentation, I can't, I can't see them on my end. Anyway, keep the, maybe they could keep the woods as an employee break area and a flood prevention item. Mature trees soak up thousands of gallons of rainwater. The EPA recognizes trees as best management practices. A BMP can be a tree, not a pond. Trees might be, they might be more efficient flood mitigation efforts than drainage ponds. The reason some areas don't flood is the existence of hundreds or thousands of mature trees. The, the forests, the intertwined root systems are critical for flood prevention and tree stability, not to mention smog prevention. I'm concerned that earlier in the presentation, the buffer went from 75 feet to 50 feet to 10 feet. Anyway, the second thing I wanted to, I've got, well, there's six of them. Anyway, the other suggestion I had was to, if they were to add eight-foot dirt hills with dozens of trees to the entire perimeter as a noise reduction effort and flood prevention effort. Some neighbors are rightfully concerned about added noise, especially from a 24-hour facility. Neighbors are rightfully concerned about losing more mature trees. Virginia Beach residents are recently having to pay for a $567 million flood bond due to excessive development and tree canopy depletion in Virginia Beach. It is good business practice to stay cordial with the neighbors. Plans appear that another road could possibly be added, and the extra road does not seem necessary. I'm completely opposed to adding a road with citizen tax dollars for a multi, it's actually a trillion-dollar company. There's, that, if the work shifts are staggered enough, traffic will not be a major issue. Nearby GEICO has only one entrance and exit for several thousand employees, and that's been sufficient for many years, and it's also a safety feature. I'm hoping they'll also consider other locations, like the mostly vacant Chimney Hill Shopping Center, or the large vacant lot on Independence Boulevard at North Witch Duck Road. Adding solar panels is suggested, and also if, if Dominion Power can bury any new lines and leave any mature trees alone, that would be great, that would, that would help with their liability also. Anyway, there's at least 700 mature trees on that property, where each one absorbs 150 to 300 gallons of rainwater, and is like, pretty much currently the reason for lack of flooding on, on Dam Neck Road. And also wanted to mention that earlier, I understand there are rules, but when a dedicated citizen like Ms. Messner is treated harshly, we are all.
I really appreciate it.
That's all the speakers. Mr. Burdon, would you like?
Mr. Burdon.
I want to thank the citizens from Prince George's Estates, as well as from Mayberry, for, they participated through this process and will continue to, and we look forward to that continuing, and, and appreciate Mr. Odom's and Mr. Meyer's comments. The, the one thing I didn't mention and rated neither, just so everybody's clear, the, the Road B is on the north side of the 10-foot-tall berm with trees that will be 20 feet in the air or more. That is the way it's proposed, so the road is, is not next to the houses by any stretch of the imagination. There was a concern raised, I understand, at the meeting last night, this Road B should not be used for, for trucks, other than if there were to be some type of a major problem at the truck entrance, then there is a, a secondary way to get in or out, which does include a guardhouse that comes down to Road B. There will not be any trucks permitted to sit and idle in Road B, whether it's a private road or a public road. So that, that's something that I wanted to make sure everybody understood, that is not a place where trucks, that's why we've got all that area back up in the northeast and behind the building, that's for where the, where trucks would be situated. The, we never, we haven't mentioned flooding at all. The issues with potential or accidents of any, any number of potential in this, they can't shut down. They've got to be open and able to get things in and out on a daily basis. And I, I would suggest that this is actually not the last piece of, of large industrial property in this corridor, which is what we are banking on long-term to help diversify our economy. But it, I welcome Mr. Odom's participation, the city, you know, welcomes it. We, there are some potential ways that this might be able to be bridged, and, and this user, this user will do more, will do far more than anyone else I've ever dealt with in terms of, you know, spending the time and the money to put berms up and fences up and landscaping up. And last thing I'll say is, other than potentially the Road A alignment, this is all cultivated field, and there isn't one tree that we're taking down, and we're planting trees, lots and lots of them. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
Well, this one has certainly been a challenge, and I really appreciate all of the work that so many people have done, working on this. And one of the things that I, I was really impressed when we looked at our, our sustainability plan that we adopted a number of years ago, it says in making decisions, we have to look at the social, the economic, and the environmental, and find a balance. And that is perfectly describing this situation. This certainly is, has, has a great economic benefit for the city and potential employees here. But we don't want to hurt two neighborhoods to achieve that, and that's the social. We've got to find the balance. And I'm, I'm really pleased to think that I think we've got a lot of, of folks who understand that there are things that we can do, and that we're going to continue to work on that. Because I, I think with the Declaration of Covenants and conditions that has already been recorded, that the areas that do abut, so to speak, the industrially zoned property have protections. And I know someone mentioned the fact that they were a little confused by just how wide the buffer is, so let me just read the statement. "The grantor desires to impose on this property conditions confirming its obligation to create, create thereon a variable width buffer 75 foot wide or larger, with a combination of landscaped buffers and screening adjacent to those portions of the property's boundary line, which are shared with the rear property line of any lot in the Prince George Estates subdivision, along with a perpetual maintenance obligation." And that's pretty substantial, to not only assure this buffer, but assure a perpetual maintenance obligation. And so I think the part that we're actually going to be deciding tonight has, has a good protection. But we clearly understand that this issue of providing a second entrance or exit for this potential business, which it requires, is going to take some more work. And we clearly are going to be committing that we're going to involve any one in the neighborhood who would like to participate, to help develop this development agreement with the city, which will cover all of this range of things that are possibilities. And there are many. And, and since I've asked for some suggestions, since we talked about this on Saturday, I've heard a lot of good potential things that I think we can do. We have to remember that the southeastern expressway- We have to remember that the Southeastern Expressway and Green Belt, it wasn't just a road, it was a Southeastern Expressway and Green Belt. That's why it was, we acquired a 300-foot right-of-way with it, because there was planned to be green areas on each side. But that's gone. That's off the master street and highway plan. That's not going to happen. But we've got another little glitch here for these two neighborhoods, and that is that Dominion Energy has, under review by the State Corporation Commission, a portion of this section through here for its transmission line for the wind energy project, another very important project for the city. And so the people who are in these two neighborhoods are already looking at the transmission line potential, very real potential to be built through there, which will be above ground as it is now proposed, although there's the request that maybe it be below ground. We'll have to see what the State Corporation Commission decides. And so for 150 feet, or possibly 170 feet, I hear, of that 300-foot right-of-way, will be a part of the transmission line area. So what we have left is the other part of that 300-foot right-of-way, that now we're looking at or talking about this potential road access. And there are a lot of things that could be done here, or we can, of course, still look at Harper's Road, or maybe there's some possibility, as someone mentioned today, still using some port of corporate, corporate landing. But now we go back, and we, we look at all the possibilities to meet this requirement, that there be an emergency exit provided for this, this very important opportunity that we have. And it's really ironic that these two very nice, well-kept neighborhoods are being affected by two of the very largest potential economic development things that we have going on in Virginia Beach, the wind energy project and, and this particular application. And we appreciate that, and we understand that, and I'll just commit to you that we're going to do this openly and involving the public, and, and, and looking at everything we can conceivably look at, to try to make sure that we're not unfairly doing something that, that is a great detriment to these two neighborhoods. I think there are a lot of possibilities, and we'll work on it. We won't know for another couple of months just what's going to happen with that right-of-way for the, the wind energy, but when the State Corporation Commission makes their finding in a couple of months, that will give us more information to see really what is going to be there that might consider using some part of it to answer this need. So, all of that will yet be decided and discussed and, and developed with the development agreement, which will include a lot of things about how this development will happen, and that will have to come back to, to City Council for approval. So, the City Council will be acting on this development agreement, and the community will have a lot of input. And, and I think we, we can really appreciate that we, we have two major projects here in a very important area. London Bridge Road is very important. These neighborhoods are very important, and we certainly are sending the message to this fine new employer that our, our neighborhoods are important, and good places for their employees to work. So we've got a lot to work out, and, and we will. And that's, that's the assurance that we can offer tonight, is that this development agreement will come back to City Council after it's had all the input we can give it, and, and so you will have an opportunity to continue to participate and to address it at that time. So, I know Ms. Wilson was over there, and I certainly appreciate any comments you want to make before I make a motion.
Oh, you made, you covered it very well, Barbara, and there were a lot of, I think everybody's worked really hard on this. And last night, the no engines being, you know, running to make noise, that came out of that meeting. It was a commitment from the, the company that that wouldn't happen. And I, I'm so proud of our city staff. They came out and they, they did a really beautiful job of, of really listening and working with everyone. And tonight is really just about the rezoning. Tonight is not about the road. Tonight is not about the power lines. Tonight is about the rezoning, and this deed of covenants is going to protect the neighborhoods with this rezoning. And I think we can feel really good and very, you know, confident about that. So I, I think this is, this will be a good night for everybody.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay, well, with, with that comment, I will make a motion to approve the rezoning of this property to I-1 Light Industrial.
Second.
Okay, any other comment? If I could just make a quick comment, yeah, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the civility and dialogue that went on here tonight, and then has been going on to at least get us to this point. You know, Mrs. Henley is a stalwart champion of yours, and, you know, be assured your voices have been heard and will be heard. But, you know, as we strive with economic development, and that is a piece of this, we go for the win-win. A number of the, of us that have been on council for a while have always heard about, let's create those jobs that keep our kids right here in Virginia Beach. This is a potential between that and the other project that Mrs. Henley mentioned. So that, you know, that's a tremendous thing. But the other thing is too, is what I've always called, in, you know, my years on council, and, you know, when you consider about, you know, where to put projects and everything, the good neighbor policy. And I have really seen nothing from this potential user that hasn't been done anything that would prove that they're going to be a great neighbor, you know, to everybody. And be assured that the dialogue doesn't end tonight. I'm sure Mrs. Henley will agree. This is where it really starts to begin after today. But I think the important thing, that this is the big first step, but once again, you know, the journey has not ended, it's beginning, your voices are going to be heard, and, you know, I am confident that this user is going to be a good neighbor, not even before building, but even when it's up and running and everything. You know, it, you know, you know, let's be confident going forward, and at this point, the vote's open.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify the motion, the item is two agenda items. It's, it's the modification of the proffers and the rezoning of the property. I just want to make sure that's in your motion, Senley.
Yes, okay. We do have to modify the proffers from the previously rezoned property, or the property that had that use on it. And so that is included in my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vote's open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the modification of proffers and the rezoning.
Thank the people in Prince George Estates.
Eddie, are you on this next item, too?
Okay, thank you all very much, and once again, thank you all that took the time to come here, listen, care, and have your voices heard. It will be, continue to be heard. Thank you. Okay, at this point, you have one more item, which is Planning Item 3, Ashton Builders One LLC, David and Tammy Lee. Conditional changes zoning from AG1 to AG2 agricultural to conditional R75 residential grade, seven-lot subdivision of single-family homes at 2487 North Landing Road, District 2, formerly District 7, Princess Anne.
Her speaker is Eddie Burdon, representing the...
Eddie, how are you? Long time no see.
Ben, Ben Penny turns back up. I'm here representing Ashton Builders. Ginny, Cincilio Cross and Barry Cross are here for Ashton Builders. I know this was on the consent agenda, so I'll be very brief. This application is right, you know, right across the street, between the west end of Courthouse Elementary School property and the animal hospital boarding facility that was approved back end of last year. That'll be developed to the west. This, this project has been vetted by the Historic Review Board, by the ITA Transition Area Committee, and both of which recommended the certificate of appropriateness, and the, the Transition Area Committee was in, in favor of it. It's a, you know, a cul-de-sac with seven homes, a density that's less than the density of the residential across the street, and the, the density that was recently approved on the Kellum property. So, it, it comes with the staff blowing recommendation and the unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission, and we know of no opposition from anyone in the, in the courthouse area, and actually it was on consent agenda, so unless, you know, there are questions, I'll let the oppositions be...
Ms. Henley.
I do, and I forgot to mention it when you asked if I had any questions.
Sure.
The gentleman who is the veterinarian...
Oh, yes, Dr. Watson.
Yes. He, he, when he designed his facility...
Yes.
He particularly positioned things, thinking that it was away from houses, not realizing that this was going to come along. And he said, I just want people, he said, I know that when the dogs are out in the lot there, they're going to bark during the day. He said, none of them will stay overnight, but they're going to bark. And he wants people who are going to be buying there to understand that he's going to have dogs, and so I, I don't know if we can, I, I...
We've already agreed...
Thing is, the disclosure...
Yes, we are, we have, we have already agreed with Dr. Watson, Les Watson, no relation, is his attorney, that they're, all the contracts will, you know, whether it's a lot sale or, and they're going to build the houses, all of them will have full disclosure as to what's going to be going on next door, if it isn't there first. And candidly, you know, I don't know how quickly Dr. Watson's going to move forward, but I would not be at all surprised if he's not already there. But we have 100% agreed to put a disclosure and to disclose it to any interested party who's looking to buy one of the houses.
Well, I hope he's ready to go. I think he's been to the Historical Review Board three times.
Yeah, from talking to, to, to Les Watson, I think he is too. And we still have, you know, we still have a, a good deal of time to go.
John?
Well, based on our discussion earlier tonight about the noise ordinance, I really had a question for, not so much for Eddie, but for the city attorney. If we had a disclosure statement, and people know that there are dogs barking, because that was one of the issues in our noise ordinance, for, we don't have to answer it tonight, because I'll take some research, but I will. These are the kind of things, the nuanced things that Aaron talked about. So you move in, but you had to notice, then the dogs bark, then the people say, well, I got the city ordinance, and you can't have them barking more than 10 minutes. Well, we've got to understand how that works. I just wonder why this is fresh in our mind? Fresh in Mark's mind, it's just a nuance to take into consideration for our ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, anybody else at this point?
We have, yeah, we have more speakers. Barbara Messner, and after Ms. Messner, we have one Webex speaker as well.
Okay.
Okay. Conditional change of zoning from AG1 into agricultural. I doubt if any of y'all fake Republicans listen to Hannity, but he had all these farmers talking about how they're struggling and how we're going to lose their food supply. We need to preserve, you know, there are exceptions to just doing whatever for the We, we don't have any money. Economic development doesn't make money. You spend money and you create debt, and these jobs aren't legit. How many people are, are they going to hire to work those automated machines for Amazon? Okay, so I'm in opposition, formerly Princess Anne, the Green Line, 1978. Yeah, I'm glad he mentioned the Historic, Historic Board. Preservation, preserve, preserve and protect. Jimmy B. Wood of Wilcox Savage, J.D. and W., their family dot, planning and economic development. Mac Rawls, the aquarium, which is taxpayer subsidized. On and on and on, and, and the list of the north-end homes and everything that are on the, you know, get all these perks, probably like 100 of them. Okay, um, we don't have any money, and, you know, this whole bond referendum thing is totally bogus. This is just the first round, and you can't put, you know, the wires and everything underground because of flooding. Flooding's not going anywhere. Every time you tear down trees and cover everything with cement, and then you have all these trucks, you know, polluting the area. And getting ready to appoint Agricultural Advisory Commission, Clean Community Commissions, places filthy, disgusting, crime-ridden, Flood Prevention Bond Referendum Oversight Board. You appoint the board to oversight the scam with, with their debt.
The last speaker is Thyra Webex, that's Sandra Schenabarger. Ms. Schenabarger, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning, you are unmuted.
Hi, I'd like to point out that the Tree City USA program summary states that it exists to celebrate towns and cities committed to growing their tree canopy, growing, not depleting. The program does not celebrate continued depletion of urban canopies and replacing forests with the few shrubs. We're talking about four more acres of trees, thousands of trees, that are flood, free flood mitigation. According to, I'm not trying to be snarky, but according to my son's fifth-grade science classes in Virginia Beach, trees in fact absorb water. The water goes to leaves, branches, and roots, all of which seem preferable over water going into, say, a car, or an office, or a living room. Once this property is sold and, and cut into the seven homes, there's no control over what those people do with their property, that they can clear-cut it if they want to. So I suggest modifying the plans to only two homes. I also did not hear anything about the Department of Environmental Quality approving this. A Historic Review Board is not an environmental board, and I also called and asked the, the Wetlands Act. That, what I was told, that since this is non-title property, although it's very close to the title wetlands, it impacts the title wetlands, so that the DEQ would need to do a study on it. And I didn't hear anything about that. I didn't get to see a copy of any kind of delineation study. And also, how exactly were any nearby neighbors notified? There was no mention of how the neighbors were notified to speak up if they wanted to speak up. So that, that was my input. I'm just, I'm concerned of, you know, with the trees, we're, the $567 million flood bond, and then we're still taking out trees, and, and that's just really, it's, that's got to, some, that we've got to start changing our thinking about that. That's...
Thank you.
That's all the speakers. Mr. Burdon?
This particular application is in the ITA, the Interfacility Traffic Area, and is kind of governed by those regulations. And if you remember, with the BRAC, concerned that there not be residential that's located in the high-noise zone, the highest noise zone between Ocean and Fintris, there was the requirement that there not be residential built in this area that's the ITA. Well, this actually is, was covered by the ITA study, but this little area right around the municipal center is not in the highest noise zone. So it can, it is agreeable with the Navy that there be some residential in the area... So it can, it is agreeable with the Navy that there be some residential in the area right here around the municipal center. And the recommendation in the ITA study was that it be allowed to have a little bit more density than it would have had in the just straight transition area to accommodate for the fact that we've got thousands of acres in the ITA that can have no more residential development than what is allowed by the current zoning. And so this does conform to the ITA plan. It does have almost 50% open space, which will be a BMP and some open area in this area. And so it does comply with the Navy's concerns, the ITA plan, and the Historic Review Board and our comprehensive plan, and I move approval.
Okay, any other discussion? Vote is open.
Do we have a second? I'm sorry, I missed it.
I just had a comment.
Yeah, John.
I wasn't predisposed to vote for this, as you all know, when we had earlier discussions. I always try to listen to what people have to say when I'm here. But I also think that Mrs. Henley listed, you know, these people have a property right, and I'd like to have trees too, but unless I pay for them, then the property owner has a right to develop their property consistent with our plan. And based on Ms. Henley's position, which I think stated it well, I think if citizens want us to buy more trees, they're going to have to come up with a tree referendum, because you can't ask people to be the last developer, and they're going to provide the forest for everybody else. That's really not right. So we've got to let people make a living, and if we want to make the living with our own money, then we have to step up to the plate and buy the property. But I just want to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the application.
Okay, thank you. That includes the agenda. I understand no appointments this evening. Is there any unfinished business? New business? Okay, we are adjourned to open dialogue.
Give us just a couple of minutes.
Dialogue, yeah. Dialogue, how's that one? All right, so everybody can leave, it's just a minute.